is contingent upon the passage of a legislative appropriation. So, and one more, I'm just full of good news here today. DEP and the Garden State Preservation Trust have approved Passaic County's application for a Green Acres matching grant of 1,250,000 for the open space plan acquisitions in Passaic County. Again, the funding is contingent upon the passage of a legislative appropriation. So, I'm very pleased to share that with the board. Thank you, DEP. Deputy Director James, do you have anything?
No, Pat, I don't.
Okay. Commissioner Octor?
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving.
Commissioner Bartlet?
Very briefly, something I was not able to do at our meeting of November 9th, but I want to thank the voters of Passaic County for the vote of confidence and re-electing me and Sandy Lizarra to the board. I also want to mention that today's theme for me has been infrastructure. I spent this morning with the Association of, excuse me, Association of, Council of Engineering Companies, talking about the bipartisan infrastructure bill that recently passed Congress. Spent time this afternoon on Zoom with Congresswoman Sheryl Staff, talking about the same thing. We've got about $12 billion coming into the state of New Jersey from the federal government for infrastructure plans, and several more billions of dollars that we'll have the opportunity to compete for. A lot of those are in the space of what I'll call sustainable infrastructure and adaptability, and that's work that Passaic County is particularly well-poised to do. As my colleagues know, we were one of the first boards to adopt, for example, a stormwater mitigation element of our master plan. When we do major projects like Lakewood Avenue in, Lake Side Avenue, excuse me, in Patterson, we incorporate into those green elements, conservation, as well as resiliency, as we do with Dundee Island. And I think that, Pat, is part of that DEP funding, is the fact that Dundee Island is part of flood mitigation in Passaic County. So, we're incredibly well-poised to grab at those federal funds for the infrastructure improvements and the resiliency and environmental improvements we need in Passaic County. I hope to see the Senate take up and pass the Build Back Better Act, because that would bring even more opportunity in whether you're talking about electric vehicle charging or other environmental resiliency and open space kind of investments. It's that federal funding that lets us do things at scale, and we've got a lot of exciting years ahead with what we already know, and hopefully even more if the Senate will pass Build Back Better.
Thank you. Commissioner Best. Okay. Commissioner Duffy. Commissioner Lizarra, unfortunately, had a family emergency tonight, so she won't be able to give her report. I'll take a motion to open the public portion of the meeting.
Make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Duffy, seconded by Commissioner Octor.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Anyone wishing to make a public, involve in the public portion of the meeting, please step forward, state your name and address. I'd like to remind everyone that everything that you say will be a matter of public record. We have this new technology here that will let you know when the three minutes have passed. And I would respectfully ask everyone to please pay attention.
And Director, through you, there's a, there's a sign-in sheet that we will ask everyone to sign when, when you come up to speak at the podium, please, also. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Ken Dolsky, 21 Winfield Drive, Parsippany. At the last meeting, November 9th, the, there were several statements, there were three statements from the Commissioners that I felt demonstrated their lack of understanding of important issues around the TGP project, and I'd like to comment on those. First, it was stated that forcing residents and businesses to use gas instead of electricity would make climate change worse, as the majority of our electricity comes from coal. This is false for three reasons. First, methane is worse for climate change than coal. It's 86 times more potent as a greenhouse gas than CO2. On November 2nd, the EPA announced a new Clean Air Act rule stating, "One-third of the warming from greenhouse gases occurring today is due to human emissions of methane, a potent greenhouse gas, and sharp cuts over the next decade will have a near-term beneficial impact on the climate." So, the point is that coal is not the enemy, we've got to get rid of methane. Second, I looked at New York's and New Jersey's use of coal. New York's last coal plant was closed in 2020, when only 0.1% of its energy came from coal. In New Jersey, only 1.5% of our electricity is from coal. So, adding more users of electricity is not going to increase the use of coal. Third, electrification is a major global strategy to decarbonize. Fossil-fuel-based appliances and vehicles will never get cleaner. By moving their power to the grid and continually making grids greener, all appliances will continually reduce their use of dirty fossil fuels. Installing more gas appliances is exactly the wrong strategy, as they will need to be replaced to achieve our emission goals. The second misunderstanding is the statement that agencies like FERC, PMSA, and the DEP have our best interests at heart. These are captive agencies that do the bidding of the fossil fuel industry that they are supposed to regulate. FERC and PMSA especially, PMSA is the Pipeline Hazardous Material Safety Administration, do not act in the best interest of the public. FERC and PMSA have failed to maintain safe pipelines in the U.S. For natural gas alone, PMSA has recorded more than 3,200 accidents deemed serious or significant since 1987. From 1994 to 2013, there were 855 serious incidents with gas resulting in 319 fatalities, 1,200 injuries, and over $494 million in property damages. One of the most egregious FERC actions was to provide the Williams Gas Pipeline Company permission to start construction of its Constitution Pipeline in Pennsylvania before all permits had been approved. In 2016, the pipeline company destroyed the Maple Tree Farm, a family use for income from maple syrup, and then New York denied a water quality permit, stopping the pipeline. This is the regulatory agency in which the Passaic County Commissioners have complete faith. Thank you.
I'm going to, Elaine, my name is Elaine Dolsky, 21 Winfield Drive, Parsippany. I'm going to continue the statement that Ken was making. The third misunderstanding is that this resolution should not be passed because it has nothing to do with the Commissioners, as it is non-binding and they don't have the authority to approve or deny the permits. First of all, protecting public health and safety is clearly the responsibility of the Commissioners, and we expect them to do everything they can to achieve this. And by the way, the DEP missed the fact that the benzene emission level is over its limit of six pounds per year, and methane emissions are over the Title V DEP limit. Second, local and county resolutions have been critical in pressuring Governor Murphy to stop other polluting projects, including the North Bergen Power Plant, the New Jersey Transit Power Plant in the Meadowlands, and it was a key tactic in stopping the Pilgrim Pipeline. In the case of the Pilgrim Pipeline, after a number of towns passed resolutions, the New Jersey State Assembly passed a similar resolution because it saw so much local opposition. And when the pipeline company was trying to lease land in New York to build its pumping station at the start of the pipeline, the landowner refused to lease, citing the number of municipal resolutions that they said would have made building the pipeline a Herculean task and unlikely to be accomplished. Resolutions send a message and have had tremendous influence on both public and private interests. By not passing a resolution against this project, your message is that you don't care about your constituents' health and safety. New York does not want this gas. It should also be noted that there are local forces that work across the country to ban new gas hookups. San Francisco, Seattle, Denver, and New York have either enacted or proposed measures to ban or discourage the use of the fossil fuel in new homes and buildings, two years after Berkeley, California passed the first such prohibition in the U.S. in 2019. Clearly, there is life after natural gas and is neither necessary nor desirable. There is now a bill in the New York Assembly that would ban new permits for gas hookups in new buildings in New York State after December 31st, 2024. When this New York State bill is passed, it will start to decrease demand for gas, and there will be less demand for TGP gas, despite its claim that it will be selling all this gas for decades. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you.
Barbara Stomber, 101 Kiwanis Drive, Wayne, New Jersey. I was extremely disappointed that the Commissioners failed to pass the resolution against the Tennessee Gas Pipeline Compressor Station plan for West Milford. With pipeline projects like these running rampant through our state, which have absolutely no benefits to New Jersey, the effects leave a chilling effect on our residents and their future. The push to continue the expansion of natural gas, a fossil fuel that has been linked to climate change, air, water, and noise pollution, as well as destruction of pristine environments like West Milford, is unconscionable. Add to this the Tennessee Gas Pipeline's environmental track record in Lake Lookover in Hewitt and Bearfit Waters in West Milford. It is more important than ever to stop this expansion project. How can we possibly justify the immoral act when New Jersey already has over 1,500 miles of pipeline, although it is 47th in size and number one in population density? You may look at West Milford and see the beauty and abundance of space we experience, but realize that a pipeline explosion could change this serenity overnight. Even without the increased emissions from a compressor station, the ozone pollution in New Jersey is rated F, among the worst in the nation, and the rivers and streams in West Milford support drinking water to millions of New Jersey residents. New Jersey continues to be the butt of so many jokes around the country. We are home to the largest number of superfund sites, 118 at last count. Since 1895, average temperatures have climbed by almost 3.6 degrees Fahrenheit, double the average for the other lower 48 states, and apparently, that's not enough. We want to be number one in the number of pipeline projects crisscrossing our state and continue the expansion of fossil fuels, now for the benefit of Westchester County, tomorrow to increase our exports of fracked gas. How can our state possibly justify the expansion of new fossil fuel infrastructure when the New Jersey Energy Master Plan states that greenhouse gases must be reduced? This project will create 40 union jobs that will end in one year, but this project will be responsible for the continuation of 40 years of increased emissions and methane into the atmosphere, increasing the warming of our planet. Governor Murphy has given us his promise to reduce greenhouse gases. The Commissioners should pass the resolution to oppose this project and allow Governor Murphy's actions to speak louder than his words. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tom Conaway. I come from Ringwood. We unanimously voted against this pipeline. I'm the environmental commissioner up there. First, we got to look at that deal, Mr. Commissioner Duffy, that they struck up in West Milford. What a joke, huh? How do you have a deal that actually says it is agreed that any construction permits for TGP may be processed and released immediately by the township's construction department without the need for a zoning planning approval or authorization from the township planning board? That is a bad deal, one I doubt could even be legal. But they had a gun to their head. Let's not believe the promises TGP paid. They're all in paragraph two. Paragraph 3A says anything that they do wrong, including thinking about a permit, negates every, all the promises, safety promises, the $200,000 bribe for safety equipment. It's all gone, and that property tax is gone. Look what, look what the reservoir did to us up there. Highlands Act devalued their land. I thought the Highlands Act was to protect water. We pay, get less taxes from them. They took my family's land up there. Yes, I'm related to the Hewitts. Passaic County, so this is a no-brainer for you guys. You just got a wake-up call with these election results. You're not going to give up on the environment as Democrats. These initiatives by all our governors, apparently, they're all just fake, because if we're going to pipe new gas through the Highlands, protecting our own water, no benefit to Jersey, and if this council isn't going to take a stand for that, what are you going to stand for? This is going to new construction, not existing stuff. No one's going to get cut off from gas. There's initiatives to transfer people from gas to heat pumps, and we're going to pay for new construction? Put them in the heat pumps, put them on that electric. And last is the public perception here. It's this union angle. My God, these pipeline companies come out here and they tout union jobs. We're in the greatest labor shortage of my lifetime, and we're going to do this for 40 union jobs for one year? So, forget that, just throw that out the door. We need to wake up, and really, if we're going to put teeth behind these agendas we see offshore windmills, millions of dollars of my money, that's my money going to the Fed and coming back, let's stop this pipeline. I don't need a Tesla charger next to a compressor station. What I need is that compressor station out of my town. Some of the people here, they're into their environmental causes. I'm not. This is my town, I walk those woods. I walk the disaster that is the pipeline. You go, drive down the road, it looks great. Their trees are 12 feet tall by the road. Get a mile in, it's coolers, it's beer cans, it's an ORV highway, which is causing all sorts of disasters up there with the woods. Our woods are draining into our lakes. We just took out tons of sediment from Cupsole Lake in Ringwood because we're not protecting our woods. We've got this pipeline on you. They want to put in a compressor station? No problem. Finish the job from 10 years ago. Get those trees to grow, get the plastic tubes, hundreds of thousands of plastic tubes just sitting in our woods, get them out, fix the original job before we give them the next one. We don't have any other thing to hold over the head. Fix what they have in there, then we'll give them the pressure they want, and New York can just take all the gas they want. By the way, New York can also frac, they've got tons of fracking resources, and they can build their own pipeline. Let's have them do it, rather than trash our Highlands and turn it into an energy superhighway. Thank you.
I'm the president of the Climate Group 350 New Jersey Rockland. I live in Bloomfield. I was here two weeks ago, and I heard all these construction unions, guys from the construction unions, talking about this great opportunity for jobs. I know something about jobs when it comes to compressor stations. I was the coordinator of Rose Land Against the Compressor Station, and we tried to stop the building of the first compressor station that has twice been added to since that first one. We tried to stop that first one. We weren't able to do it. So, that was a 25,000 horsepower compressor station. You know how many full-time jobs came from that? Two. There were two men inside that compressor station after it was built. That's what we're talking about in terms of job creation. And as far as the construction jobs, which are jobs, they're temporary jobs, but they're jobs, they say 40 workers, construction workers. How many of those construction workers do you think are going to actually be residents of West Milford, or for that matter, residents of Passaic County, or for that matter, New Jersey? I saw the license plates for the workers when they were doing the original construction at that Rose Land compressor, starting in March of 2013, went until November of 2013, about eight months. A lot of those license plates were from Texas, from Louisiana, from Arkansas, from Oklahoma, from the areas where the headquarters were of the Williams Company, and I know that for Kinder Morgan, their headquarters are down there, too. That's where the workers, most of them are going to come from. They're not going to come locally. That's not the way it works. They want the guys with the skills who've built other compressor stations. You can understand why they'd want to do that. So, this idea that this is this big job creator for the construction unions is not true. It's just a lie. And then there's just the bigger picture of job creation. I mean, the jobs are not in the fossil fuel industry going forward, they're just not. The world is shifting away from fossil fuels to renewable energy and battery storage, energy efficiency. That's where the world is going. That's where New Jersey is going. Here in the United States, according to Forbes Magazine, there are 3.3 million Americans working in the clean energy field. That's three times as many as are working in the fossil fuel industry. So, I would urge you, when you vote on this, please stand up for clean air and stand up for our disrupted climate and reject these lies about how this is a job creator, because it just is not. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Paula Rogovan. I live in another county, I live in Bergen, but I was part of the movement that stopped the Meadowlands Power Plant in North Bergen and the New Jersey Transit Power Plant that was to be in Carney. And just on the New Jersey Transit one, we got the governor to have them pivot from fracked gas to a renewable energy microgrid. We're looking at the future, not trying to stay in the past. I'm a teacher, I was, I'm a retired teacher. I worked 44 years in the New York City Public Schools, so retired two years ago. I'm also a grandmother, and I have some newborn twins in our family. And I'm thinking, as I'm doing this, about the children. And I'm so worried about the children. I want to urge you to pass the resolution opposing the compressor station in West Milford. It's a very dangerous thing for all residents, for all people, but especially for pregnant women and children. Pollutants that will be leaked from this, the gas line and the compressor station, and from the blowdowns that occur. Yes, there was one in Rose Land, right down the street from an elementary school, and during the blowdown, the children in that school had to be evacuated. How scary that was. But the emissions that come from the, from the gas line and the compressor station cause I don't even really need to go further than that, do I? Stillbirths, miscarriages, birth defects, asthma, COPD, other heart and lung conditions. These are not maybe results of a pipeline and compressor station. These are documented. We're talking about science. I taught little kids, I taught first graders and kindergartners. I taught them about science. Embase your opinion about this, on the science. This is the pollution that comes from gas and from a compressor station. There are other pollutants, benzene, ethylbenzene, methane, nitrogen oxides, carbon monoxide, some radioactivity. What if some of this stuff gets into the Wanakee Reservoir? Doesn't that service many, many?
Ma'am, your time is up.
My time is up. You, I think you heard my message, you got my point. Please, I plead with you to oppose the compressor station.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Hello. My name is Sam DeFalco, and I'm speaking on behalf of the organization Food and Water Watch. We have 3,500 members and supporters here in Passaic County, and we're urging you all tonight to vote to pass the resolution.
Excuse me, can you tell us your address, please? Because that's part of this.
Sure. 100 Bayard Street in New Brunswick. Our coalition of organizations who have been working for almost a year opposing this project wrote to the Commissioners last week to ask for time on the agenda to have experts answer your questions about this project. There was lots of unanswered questions at the end of the last meeting. That request was denied. So, we are disturbed that a multi-billion dollar, taxes-based fossil fuel corporation has the opportunity to have an in-depth discussion with all of you about this project, but residents were not afforded the same opportunity. But nevertheless, I would like to address one thing that was brought up at the last meeting, and that is about the pollution that would be emitted from the compressors and specific compounds. That was something that the representative from TGP and Kinder Morgan did not have an answer to. So, emissions that would be released during blowdowns contain volatile organic compounds, including benzene, ethylbenzene, tuleine, xylenes, carbon dioxide, and methane. These are compounds that cause a number of health conditions, including cancer, cardiovascular disease, asthma, COPD, central nervous system defects, birth defects, as the speaker before me mentioned, and other reproductive issues. Compressor stations also risk exposure to radioactive elements because Marcellus fracked gas contains radioactive elements like radon, plutonium, and other components like that. And these can cause health disease, nervous system defects, and decreased lung function. And another thing I want to mention is the amount of benzene that's proposed to be emitted by this project is over six pounds per year. That might not sound like a lot, but OSHA says that the safe amount of exposure to benzene is one part per million over eight hours, and that's while wearing a respirator, which is not something that communities living near this compressor will be doing. Benzene causes leukemia and other childhood cancers, and medical literature suggests that there's no safe levels of exposure to this chemical and some of the other chemicals that would be emitted. So, we urge you to stand up for your constituents and pass this resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public?
I'm Jeff Rappaport. I'm from Wayne, New Jersey. I know there's some other people that haven't spoken that are from Passaic County. I'd like to just address Mr. Best. Right, you have no power to pass or approve or disapprove, but you have the power to do what's right, and you have the power to let your point of view be known to the governor. And you need to support other people that support your party, and who's off, and who are often not getting the most out of environmental, good environmental treatment. I've had no answer on how this is going to affect the water in Wayne. They don't want to answer really the tough questions. It seems to me as though the labor thing was just a setup. Weren't that many people, there weren't that many jobs. Company didn't want to answer any of the questions, and most of the jobs are coming in renewable We had a march in Newark two weeks ago, demonstration, march. We had a march in Newark two weeks ago, demonstration, march, with 200 people. Maybe 150 were from Newark, maybe 50 were from elsewhere. And I'm saying, God, their interests and my interests. Our air is, their air, in some cases, might not smell as good, might be because politically weak, but their interests and my interests. Not that long ago, in the course of history, during the Nazi regime, Martin Niemöller, Protestant minister, said the following: First they came for the communists, but I wasn't a communist, so I didn't speak. Then they came. Then they came for the Jews. I wasn't Jewish, so I didn't speak. Then they came for the trade unionist. I'm not a trade unionist, so I didn't speak. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak. We're really one family. We don't have to support a company because it wants to extend an outline and go to all extremes to get this, to get what appears to be tepid support to begin with. Please don't, please pass this resolution. It's much more important than you think.
Anyone else in the public?
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Christina Montorio, and I'm here on behalf of the International Brotherhood of Teamsters. I'm here on behalf of our international president, Fred Potter, who I think many of you may have heard from. I am a resident of Monmouth County. I live in Middletown, New Jersey. So just wanted to talk a bit on pipelines and infrastructure. Heard a lot of comments about union jobs. You know, it's the union's position that pipelines and their infrastructure bring us the heat that we need to heat our homes, keep electricity on. The TGP has been designed with as little impact as possible to the environment and residents. And most importantly, it'll be constructed with the highest quality labor, and that means us. And these are good, quality jobs. I know I heard folks talk about maybe only 40 construction jobs. Our construction industry lives and dies off of those kinds of jobs, right? A year here, a year there. That's what is the line between a lot of our members and poverty, right? And these are good-paying, good-wage jobs. I want to also mention that we represent the Kinder Morgan facility in Middlesex County that this project is connected to. So even though we're looking at the construction jobs just on this project, there's actually regional impacts that are going to happen to our economy, certainly to our union at Teamsters Local 469, and our regional economy, and all the rest of the Teamsters, particularly in the construction industry, but really throughout the state. So we encourage you to vote no on the resolution. We believe that West Milford has already made the agreement. That's the local community. And we appreciate you being willing to take our comments tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public wish to be heard?
I'm Margaret Wood, 324 Germantown Road, West Milford, New Jersey. I want to remind you that if this project does not go through, it will be replaced by another project with an equal amount of jobs, so no jobs will be lost. Now, I'd like to read a comment from my colleague Laura Ashtiani, who cannot be here today. Passaic County Commissioners, I am commenting regarding the Tennessee Gas Pipeline 300 East Project and resolution opposing it. I am unable to attend the meeting as I am a healthcare professional and cannot get off my job. I watched the last meeting and was appalled at how it has become anti-union to oppose a construction project just because a few union members are supposed to be hired for the project. First of all, I have supported unions my entire working career and was a proud member of HPAE, Health Professionals and Allied Employees, for over 10 years. Let's be clear. Kinder Morgan Company is no friend of labor, and using our brothers and sisters as pawns to promote their polluting agenda is disgusting. Kinder Morgan, through its lobbying and contributions over the past 20 years, has spent millions supporting politicians that support an anti-union, anti-labor agenda. If you support this upgrade, you are in turn allowing Kinder Morgan to pay their way to ignore all of the climate change science and allowing our environment to continue to be destroyed, which in turn is bad for all of us and not worth the few measly breadcrumbs thrown to the 40 pipe workers by the Kinder Morgan Company. The real question is, why is labor and elected labor leaders so fooled by the Kinder Morgan Company and its trickery, using our members to in fact push something that is detrimental to all of us? Please don't allow yourselves to be fooled and vote to pass a resolution against this project. Laura Ashtiani, Newfoundland, New Jersey. Now, I'd like to read my own comment. Margaret Wood, West Milford, New Jersey. I am a resident of West Milford, and so don't tell me that West Milford says they want this project. They don't. Just a handful of people do. Two weeks ago, Commissioner Best said he didn't want to vote on the resolution against TGP because it wasn't within your usual skill set, more or less, to deal with such matters. It is the job of all the commissioners to protect the health and welfare of Passaic County citizens. Do you know what good managers do when they don't have the knowledge to decide an issue? They delegate authority to someone or a group of people who do have the skills. That does not mean giving that power to TGP. In this case, it is my opinion that TGP is like a predator who stands to profit off of the project that will sicken and kill approximately 2,000 people in Passaic County over 30 years. That's according to a scientific, peer-reviewed paper that I submitted in a previous meeting.
Ma'am, respectfully, your time is up.
Okay. So please, delegate your authority to the environmentalists who do have the skill set to properly protect the health and welfare of the Passaic County residents.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to be heard?
Seeing no one at the podium, I move the closed public vote.
Question made by Commissioner Duffy.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner James. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Opter.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. Next item is L1. These are two-thirds vote here, folks.
Yeah, I'll move it.
Second.
I'm sorry, who moved it? Moved by Deputy Director James, seconded by Commissioner Duffy. This is a resolution authorizing the chief financial officer to execute budget transfers between the 2021 budget appropriations pursuant to NJSA 40A, as noted in the resolution. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Opter.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is M1, a resolution opposing the Tennessee Gas Pipeline Company's application for the expansion of the compressor, compressor station in the township of West Milford, New Jersey pursuant to NJSA 40:20-1, all noted in the resolution. Before we vote on it, Commissioner Lozara, who could not be in here, as I said earlier this evening, wanted me to convey to the board that if she was here, she would be voting no on this resolution. Any discussion? Roll call. I'm sorry.
I'd like to speak briefly.
Sure.
I didn't want to let any of my colleagues go first, but first of all, I know that some of the questions coming out of November 9th meeting were questions that I had posed to the witnesses that were before us. And I want to acknowledge the responses that we received from Kinder Morgan in response to my questions on November 9th. I'm glad to know that there were inline inspections run on these two pipelines in 2015 and 2019, with the next scheduled inline inspections in 2022 and 2026. I was glad to know that hydrostatic pressure testing was done in 2013, as well as maintenance digs in 2017 and 2021. So I'm not voting for this resolution because I believe the TGP E300 upgrade will be any more dangerous than any other gas pipeline. I also continue to reject the idea that the environment and jobs are inherently at odds. I took our union voices from the November 9th meeting and the emails I've received both before and since then very, very seriously. I am committed to creating every possible opportunity to bring those good union jobs to New Jersey and to Passaic County. As I mentioned in my remarks earlier in the meeting, I met this morning with the American Council of Engineering Companies of New Jersey. We were talking about making sure that New Jersey County's metropolitan planning organizations and municipalities and the state compete for the federal funding that is there, particularly for sustainable projects under the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act that's already been passed and the Build Back Better Act that we hope will soon be passed. I also spent part of this afternoon on a Zoom meeting with Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill's office, talking with their staff about the same thing, making sure that our region, the 11th Congressional District, Passaic County, and our neighbors compete for those federal funds so that we can bring those in and have those union jobs. I took very seriously the concerns that union representatives expressed, that companies that do sustainable energy and other sustainable projects are not union shops, and they ought to be. I'm pro-jobs, and I'm a union ally. But it's time to stop investing in 20th century technologies, and it's time to, particularly in New Jersey, take a lead on 21st century technologies. Climate change is an existential threat to Passaic County, to New Jersey, to the nation and to the world, to the future and the children and the grandchildren that some people spoke about, and that's why my vote will be yes on M1.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I need to get a motion on this resolution. I acted a little too quickly. Get a motion on the resolution before we can discuss any more.
I'll make that one.
Motion made by Commissioner Duffy.
To pass it or to?
No, no, to, to. Open it up, yeah. Motion made by Duffy. Seconded by Commissioner Opter. Roll call, please.
No, we.
They're not voting for the resolution on this round. This is just open to arms. We are voting.
Yeah, it's, it's been moved. I guess, does anyone else want to speak on it?
Now, now we'll have discussion on it. Try to rattle you a moment.
Director, I'll just, I'll just echo the comments of my colleague. In terms of that, I appreciate the time that was spent on this. Quite honestly, I agree with, you know, our Commissioner Best, that this is not really the right forum for this. But the reason why the debate is so heated about this is because this is a proxy for something much, much larger than this body, or Passaic County, or New Jersey. It is a proxy battle for the future of how we power and, and take care of the planet that we have. And I am sympathetic, very sympathetic. I told all the folks who were allies on the environmental fight, don't say to folks who are in labor or in construction jobs, oh, it's only 40 jobs, or oh, it's only a job, or oh, it's only this. If it's between a paycheck and not a paycheck, you know, if you're a weekly paycheck employee, you get, you get paid, you know, it comes in your direct deposit every couple of weeks or whatever, right? When you work construction, you only get paid when the job is there and you're, you're, you know, you don't get it every week. You don't get it every month. So I'm very sympathetic to those folks. I'm very sympathetic to the town that's in a tough spot. But the reason why I will vote in favor of this is simply that enough is enough, right? We have to take a stand somewhere. So I agree that this body can only do so much, but we can make our statement. My statement is simply that if we had done what we were supposed to do 10 years ago, 20 years ago, 30 years ago, whenever we had given a damn about our environment or any of it, we wouldn't be in this spot, for labor, for the town, even for the company building this pipeline or expanding this pipeline. We wouldn't be here. We'd be in a much better place. But because we didn't do what we were supposed to do, because people didn't speak up, because we took the easy route, we're left with much harder decisions now, and people pay the consequences. Whether you want to talk about raising rates, or jobs, or any of it, people pay the consequences of bad decision-making in the past. And that's what we're paying up. That's what this is about. That's why I'm voting for this resolution, even though I know it has limited effect, because quite honestly, I'm sick of it, of just keeping, kicking the ball down the road, kicking the ball down the road. We're long past the time where we can do that.
Anybody else? More discussion? Roll call, please.
County Commissioners, Opter.
Yes, on the resolution.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
No.
Duffy. Deputy Director James.
No.
Director Lepore.
No.
No.
Give it 3-3.
3-3.
So the resolution fails. Thank you very much for all who participated and taking the time out to voice your opinion. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Director, thank you. Just a few housekeeping items. I've circulated an amended version of N34, which is a resolution authorizing change order number one to Diamond Construction for the construction of ADA-compliant curb ramps along Ringman Avenue in the borough of Pompton Lakes, New Jersey pursuant to NJAC 5:30-11.3 at SEC. Just fixing the deduction amount in the resolution. And then N8, and 9, and then 13 are all duplicative resolutions that can be removed, so we don't vote on them twice. There is no need for an executive session. And again, if any commissioners would like to vote on a resolution individually, just make that motion through to the director.
County, county council, can you explain, I'm sorry.
N8, and 9, and 13 can be pulled. N13 was passed at a previous meeting, and N8 and N9 are both listed twice. 8, 9, and 13, and amending N34. N34.
Sure, somebody else can make that motion. I see what you say.
So moved.
Bartlett.
Bartlett and James.
Or Bartlett and James.
I never see the stupid thing.
Must have hurt. I do it all the time.
Once a meeting, I crash into the glass.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
County Commissioners, Opter. Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes, and I'm pulling 8, 9, and 13. I'll take a motion on the consent agenda from 157.
I'll move it.
With the amended resolution.
And with the pulled.
And with the pulled, 8, 9, and 13.
All right, I'll move it.
We'll move that. By Commissioner James.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bartlett. Any discussion? Roll call.
County Commissioners, Opter.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. Take a motion on personnel.
Move the personnel agenda.
Made by James.
By the way, just so everybody's clear, it's five the way it was.
It's what?
There's nothing pulled, is what I'm saying.
It's the full personnel agenda. I have a motion. Need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bartlett. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Opter.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. Need a motion on the bills?
Move the bills list.
Made by James.
Second.
Seconded by Bartlett. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Opter.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes, and before I ask for an adjournment, I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and hope you enjoy your time with your families. Take a motion to adjourn.
Move it.
Motion made by James, seconded by Opter. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Opter.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. Good night, everyone.
Good night.